Good evening. I'm Asante Gadson, I'm a senior at Frederick Douglass High School. I participated in the CEO's Student Advisory Board and I have been a part of the IB program at Frederick Douglass High School in my four-year tenure, during my four-year tenure at Frederick Douglass High School, and been able to maintain a GPA of 3.5. I enjoy giving to my school and the less fortunate. I was a participant of the Proctor and Gamble Leadership Academy at Morehouse College this past summer. My long-term goal is to become a world-renowned sports analyst. I'm a proud senior at Frederick Douglass High School and I am ready for college. And now, I'd like to welcome you to September 24th, 2015 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include the news break, environmental literacy, it's easy being green. Additionally, under governance, the Board of Education will address the Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2022 and the FY 2016 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the September 24th, 2015 Board of Education meeting will begin.
Thank you so much, Mr. Asante Gadson from Frederick Douglass High School. What an outstanding young man. Just imagine what it would be like for me to try to say all that without all this paper in front of me, right here. I don't think I'd have gotten past the first sentence. Excellent job, excellent job.
And excuse me, Mr. Tier?
Yes ma'am.
He's also from District 9.
District 9, alright. Okay, so, good evening. Welcome to the September 24th, 2015 Board of Education meeting. As always, before we begin, as a reminder, please do turn off or put on vibrate your electronic devices. Mrs. Jacobs, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in our educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, understanding, amen.
Amen. And the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. Mrs. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mrs. Epps.
Here.
Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Mrs. Grady.
Present.
Ms. Hernandez. Mrs. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have a change to the agenda that anyone wants to make this evening?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move non-agenda item speakers up to be behind the agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adopt the September 24th, 2015 Board Meeting Agenda as amended?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the August 27th, 2015 Board Meeting and September 10th, 2015 Board Work Session and the September 10th, 2015 CIP Public Hearing Minutes? It has been moved and seconded to approve all three of those sets of meetings. Is there any discussion? Yes, oh, yes, go ahead, Dr. Anderson, and then Ms. Jacobs. It seems perfectly appropriate to me, if there's objection for the board, that we accept the minutes of the Board Work Session with commendation. Ms. Jacobs?
I just wanted to note in the record, to remind staff to make sure that for the approval of the minutes, that it just doesn't include the members who weren't present at the meeting, that's all.
Can you repeat that?
It may be an all-in favor, I'm just saying, make sure you note the people who weren't actually at the meeting for the approval of the minutes.
That we do not include absent board members. Absolutely, sounds good. Alright, seeing no other lights, I will bring us to a vote, all those in favor of approving the August 27th and Board Meeting, September 10th, CIP Public Hearing and the September 10th Board Work Session with commendation. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, we will now move to the news break entitled Environmental Literacy, It Is Easy to be Green.
Walking through the woods on their school's very own nature path, the students at Samuel Ogle Middle are all headed in the right direction. For with each step, even those hesitant about the outdoors are increasing their environmental literacy and learning, with apologies to Kermit the Frog, that it is easy being green. By infusing environmental education across the curriculum and promoting a green school initiative, Prince George's County is ensuring that its schools will be green-certified and that its students will become capable custodians of Planet Earth, all while having some fun and learning along the way.
But I really had an idea about the environment and making it something that my children would love and participate in the rest of their life, and the green school was a great way to go for that.
For the students, getting the green light to go outside has already made a difference to the environment. From recycling and cleaning up streams, to growing wild rice for Jug Bay, to harvesting kale and Swiss chard for an unexpectedly delicious salad, the results have been extraordinary.
That was a good meal. We were kind of skeptical of the adults at first, but once they cut up all those vegetables and made that salad dressing, and they made a healthy soda, they ate it all.
We grew Swiss chard, and I didn't know Swiss chard and what it was even before, but after I tasted it, I really liked it. We've learned that the energy that the food, that the plants store, and what type of soil should use, and how much you should water, it's a lot, it's very exciting.
Just like the infinite beauty of Mother Nature, there are already plenty of ways schools are taking steps toward green certification.
So the process isn't an easy one, but it's already present in the school system. We have the curricular pieces already identified, so it's a matter of educating the members of the staff on, hey, this is what, you're already doing it, we just need to collect documentation. The students recycling, we all recycle at all of our schools now, so that's one of the activities that go toward Maryland Green Schools.
For schools that have already been certified and those pursuing certification, the key is getting students directly involved in planning and carrying out their projects and tapping into the expertise of the county's environmental literacy teachers, who are not short on good ideas or lack for enthusiasm. I get the sense that you can't wait to get up in the morning to go to work. Am I right about that?
You're definitely right about that. This experience has been a great one, coming into and being part of the environmental literacy team and being able to share my passion for the environment and what's going on with green schools. I became an oceanographer, and then I in turn became a meteorologist, because all those things were outside, and I loved just being outside as a kid and spending that time outside. Some of the same things that I hear our students articulate, they want to be outside and they enjoy it and they love that outdoor learning experience.
The green schools initiative is still in its infancy, but signs show that it's already a big hit among students. For whether they're wading into a bay to study vegetation, breaking a sweat to mulch a garden, or getting down and dirty to plant a butterfly garden, Prince George's children couldn't be happier or experiencing more success.
We are green towns!
Do you all like to work in the garden?
Yes, of course.
Why?
Because gardens are so much fun!
So, join the green team and start training the next stewards of Prince George's County, one hiker, one recycler, one gardener at a time. What does it mean to be a green school?
It means to be awesome!
This is Dave Zarin for TV 96 and 38.
Alright, what a bunch of awesome students we just witnessed.
How did I get a copy of that, a video?
Sure, Mr. Valentine, but tell me why particularly, wasn't there a special awesome student?
Well, today is National Daughter's Day, so you don't have to recognize my daughter, Ivy Noel Valentine, who's a kindergartner at John Hansen Montessori and played a big part in this video, so we're very proud of her.
Alright, thank you for that, folks. We'll move on now to the report of the chair. And I will begin tonight, as I often do, remembering honoring those who are no longer with us, and tonight I want to give honor, we want to, as a board, give honor to three great public servants. Delegate James E. Proctor Jr., who represented District 27A and was a 32-year employee of the Prince George's County Public School System. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Carla D. Blue, who's the cousin of our very own Dwayne Brown of Television Services, and Dr. Mary Cunningham, former principal of Gwyn Park High School. These great public servants were committed deeply to the success of Prince George's County Public School students and the entire community. Please do join me in a moment of silence in honor of their accomplishments and lives well-lived. Thank you, friends. Now, in the midst, as we wrap up September, September is indeed an exciting month in education. Back in July 2010, the US House of Representatives passed a resolution designating the second week of September as Arts in Education Week to promote and showcase the immense role arts education has in producing engaged, successful, and college and career-ready students. CTV News recently highlighted and recognized Sutland High School senior and center of visual and performing arts band major Michael Paxton during Arts in Education Week. We're proud of the work of the educators at Sutland High School doing to shape and prepare students like Mr. Paxton to be college and career-ready. September is also Attendance Awareness Month. We know that showing up is so much of an important part of the battle every day, and we know that's particularly true in school. So during the month of September, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services and schools across the district are promoting the importance of daily attendance and raising awareness about the prevention of chronic absenteeism. School achievement begins and ends, I believe, with regular attendance, and we expect and encourage every student to come to school every day on time and prepare for academic success. Wrapping up a couple of upcoming announcements and meetings, September 26th at 9:00 PM, the College and Career Readiness Summit at Oxon Hill High School, 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM.
I'm looking like, we starting the college summit at 9:00 PM on a Saturday?
Way!
I told you, I'm not like this talented young man, I just read what's on the page. 9:00 AM, Saturday morning, College and Career Readiness Summit at Oxon Hill High School. We have, how many colleges now, Ms. Boston? Close to 50 colleges from around the country that are looking to recruit the talented and committed students of Prince George's County Public Schools, so please do make sure you come out and bring your students with you. On October 8th, we have a budget work session at 5:00 PM, and October 13th, a CEO Budget Public Forum at 7:00 PM, and on October 22nd is our next board meeting following that at 7:00 PM. All of those meetings taking place here at the Sasser Building in the boardroom. If you're interested in speaking to the board, please register with the office. The Board of Education, at least two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling Thank you, folks. That concludes my chair's remarks, and I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Good evening, everyone. In my report tonight, I'd like to highlight some recent achievements and take a moment to honor a person whose impact on our school district is tremendous and that I, and I'm sure we will all deeply miss. First, I'd like to applaud our three semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. All three of the semifinalists hail from Eleanor Roosevelt High School and will go on to compete in this prestigious scholarship program that awards over $32 million to 7,400 students across the country each year. Next, I've just returned from a visit to China as part of the Prince George's County delegation. While I was there, I had the opportunity to visit several schools, meeting with students, teachers, administrators, and government officials. Over the summer, Khalil Parker, a senior at Central High School, also traveled to China for just over three weeks. While there, while he was there, he taught English and French to students and provided input to teachers on their lesson plans and classroom activities. Khalil is an IB student and has been part of our French immersion program since elementary school. Khalil says his trip and his time in our IB and immersion programs has helped him become a global citizen, and his Prince George's County Public School education has prepared him for future success in college and career. I couldn't agree with Khalil more, and I look forward to implementing a greater global exchange between Prince George's County Public Schools and the rest of the world. In that vein, we've officially kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month, and all across the district, schools are learning about and celebrating the tremendous contributions Latinos have made in our country and across the globe. I'd like to close my report this evening by joining Dr. Eubanks and remembering Delegate James Proctor, who we lost recently. For over two decades, he was a passionate legislator advocating for all of us here in Prince George's County, and he was one of us as well. For over 30 years, he was a member of the Prince George's County Public School Team, serving as a teacher, fellow principal, and administrator. Delegate Proctor left an indelible mark on our school district through contributions in the classroom and in Annapolis. He was one of our champions, and I will remember his warmth and gentle nature, but also his tenacity and resolve. To Delegate Proctor's family, his wife Suzie, and his children Edward and Stephanie, all of us in Prince George's County Public Schools extend our deepest condolences to you. He will be truly missed, and we will do all we can to carry his ideas with the same spirit, perseverance, and grace that he demonstrated during his time here with us. We will have an additional tribute for Delegate Proctor at an upcoming meeting as well. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. When I move on to hear from the public on both agenda and non-agenda items, we have three registered speakers for Item 8.1, which is the CIP Capital Improvement Program. We have two registered speakers to speak on 8.2, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. We have three speakers to speak on Agenda Item 9.2, which is the Board Policy Proposed on Minority Business Enterprise and Local Business Enterprise. And we have two speakers to speak on non-agenda items. I will remind each of you that you are registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments, but the board will not address your comments at this time. All speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete your last sentence only. Please do make sure that if you have written comments, that you share them with us for the record, for the record. So let us begin. We will begin with comments on Agenda Item 8.1. We will start with Jacqueline Wilson, parent at Benjamin Floy Creative and Performing Arts. Come on up, yes ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jackie, well Jacqueline Wilson, I'm here supporting Benjamin D. Floy VPA, and some of my concerns included pavement for our roads in our parking lot, we're older buildings, and it's not safe having the buses and parents drive coming in and out of the school and the parking lot. Another concern was that we are a visual and performing arts school, and we do not have an auditorium to have our productions. We're doing them in our gymnasium, which is our all-purpose room. And another concern that I had was, we have a lot of visual equipment, and that visual equipment is stored in our gymnasium where all the kids are filtering in and out, we have no place to put it, and those are just some of the structural additions that we are interested in having in our school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Doris Wilson, parent Benjamin Floy Creative and Performing Arts.
Good evening, I'm Doris Wilson, and my granddaughter attends Benjamin Floy School, which you know is a performing arts and creative arts school, and there are, the students are taught various things, the instruments, and they're taught chorus and dance and variety of other things. Artwork is on display, but it's on display down the hall, any nook and cranny that they can find. I am here today saying that, please consider an auditorium for Benjamin Floy. It would be less congested, it would be, as far as now they set up chairs in the gym and we sit on the chairs or in the bleachers. The sound system is not good, you can hardly hear what the speakers are saying, and you cannot hear soloists performing, and that makes it difficult, especially since there are a lot of us there. So that, in the budget, I wish that you would consider an auditorium, it would give them a way to perform in a venue that is more like real life, and it would give the artists a place to display their artwork so that we could see it and not have to go down hallways and look in classrooms. The second item is also about the parking lot. There are potholes, and it just needs repair, and I park in the handicap spot, but there are potholes that if it's raining or snowy, I don't know they're there, and I could trip on them, and I know that the students could also. And so I'm just saying, if you would just consider those two items, with, I feel like with the money that casinos are pouring into the school system, and with by 2017 and 22, you'll have MGM pouring in more money, maybe you could consider using some of that for an auditorium and repairing our pavement and so forth in the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Kevin Kendrick from William Worth Middle School.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, members of the board. My name is Kevin Kendrick, and once again, I'm here on behalf of William Worth Middle School. This is my third time speaking on behalf of our school with regards to needing a new building. I came here in September 2013, I came here in September 2014, and now I'm here September 2015. And for the first two times I came here, it was more so to ask what you all can do for William Worth, because we were having serious issues. We had parents come up, we had students come up, and I came up, another two just came up to speak on behalf, but I did want to come tonight to genuinely say thank you for what you have done so far for William Worth Middle School. When you guys responded and did the feasibility study, and you brought the attention of the problems we had to the board, it really showed that you did care about our community and about our students. When you allowed architects to speak with students and speak with families to actively gather what we want and what we think and our concerns, you showed that you cared. When you voted in January 2015 to not renovate William Worth Middle School but to replace it, you showed that you cared, and we're still having issues, but it's very comforting to see the board taking a concrete interest in its students. And I emphasize the show that you care, because I remember, and it just popped into my head not long ago, when I first came to speak here, I shared that there was a student who had said, when we were talking about the building, the board, they, whomever they are, don't care about us, but over the past couple of years, you've shown that you have, you care, you show that you care. And so tonight, when you vote to approve the proposed master budget, which will deal with funding for William Worth Middle School, I'm asking that you continue that same sentiment you've been showing for the past couple of years. And so again, I thank you so much, genuinely, I thank you for your hard work, and I thank you that you continue to put students first. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have a couple of registered speakers for Item 8.2. First is Tamara Johnson, Tamara Johnson here, from Maya Angelou French Immersion, PTSA. How about Javoni Stewart from Maya Angelou French Immersion? Either of them here this evening. Okay, doesn't look like it, we'll move on to comment on Agenda Item 9.2, is Donna Young here. Donna Young, no, how about Tanya Wingfield?
Good evening. My testimony is in response to the establishment of the MBE Issues Advisory Board, which will be charged with providing recommendations to ensure the Board of Education complies with state laws and regulations for procurement as it relates to MBEs. While I believe the board's effort is sincere in attempting to address the complaints of MBEs expressing PGCPS failure and supporting MBEs, in the procurement process, this advisory board can only be effective with the removal of internal personnel, whose actions over the years demonstrate that impeding the participation of MBEs is a competitive sport. For the past two years, I've provided credible testimony and evidence relating to the senior management responsible for ensuring a fair and competitive procurement process as it relates to MBEs, which the board has ignored. I have worked with several whistleblowers, all who I might add have been terminated or forced to resign, who attempted to bring to the attention of the CEO, the COO, general counsel, and former CFO of improprieties of department heads in information technology, special education, CIP, transportation, and purchasing as it relates to MBE participation in the procurement process. The advice and then the warning signals these individuals attempted to provide to PGCPS in fulfilling their normal job requirements was ignored. Under the current senior management of PGCPS, the public has seen the cost of doing business increase to settle vendor protests, wrongful terminations of whistleblowers, and an increase in the number of attorneys on retainer equal to that of a mafia organization. My recommendation, before wasting the time of the individuals that will serve on this advisory board, utilize the powerful strategy that corporations employ when senior management has proven a track record of failure and abuse of public and employee trust, fire them. The work you propose of this advisory board are the very requirements vested in the positions of every senior management personnel responsible to oversee the procurement process, especially in the position of director of procurement, COO, general counsel, and CEO. By nature of the fact that it is necessary to establish this advisory board is evident these individuals should either be replaced or placed on strict oversight to ensure improvement of the procurement process as it relates to MBEs. Let's follow the recent examples of Volkswagen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alfred Turner. Is Alfred Turner here? Alfred, doesn't look like it. look like it. Okay, we have a couple of registered speakers for non-agenda items. Is Jasmia Smith here? All right, how about Davina Richardson? All right, well, I will remind all of those folks who registered but did not come that if you want to come again, please just register and you can speak to us at any time. We are here to listen and we take every one of your comments seriously. All right, we will now move on to, we have completed with that agenda item. We have no discussion item today. When we have our next boardwork session, we will go into some great detail in a couple of weeks. Please do join us. But for now, we will move on to item five point oh on a consent agenda and I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items five point one through five point four under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items five point one through five point four require board approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools Red Ribbon Week, World Space Week, National Day of Writing, and Read for the Record.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve items five point one through five point four under the consent agenda? Thank you. It has been moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you very much. That item passes. We'll move on to six point oh, the budget consent agenda. Quick reminder that the student member cannot vote on the budget consent agenda and I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of six point one through six point eight under the budget consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items six point one to six point eight require board approval of the October 2015 expenditure requirements, approval of final payment and acceptance for contracted work at Bond Mill Elementary School, Cool Spring Elementary School, Francis Fuchs Early Childhood Center, Naples Road Academy, Montpelier Elementary School, Margaret Brent Special Center, and a contract with Prince George's County Public Schools Infant and Toddler Program and the ARC of Prince George's County.
Thank you. Ms. Eubanks.
Yes, I would just like to see if they could tell us, if they could explain the six point eight, the toddler program with the ARC.
Yes, it is. The ARC has been running the program, but the lead agency has been the Department of Health and we are assuming the role as lead agency over our own infant and toddler program, but still contracting with the ARC to administer the program.
One more question. Does, so does that mean, who was paying for the program at first?
The, Gwen, yes, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gwendolyn Mason, Associate Superintendent for Special Ed and Student Services. So the ARC of Prince George's County will serve, continue to coordinate services with us, but they will focus primarily in coordinating those services for our parents who are eligible for MA services. However, by Prince George's County assuming the lead, it really helps to foster from birth through age three that stronger connection to families. It coordinates the set of services in a more efficient way and it's really a very progressive move for the school system to really assume the lead agency, although historically the Health Department did and it was a great partnership, but this is really a very progressive move for the district. In terms of funds, there are grant funds that are allocated from the state. There is a grant called the CLIC Grant or the Consolidated Local Integrated Grant. That grant is about 1.5 million dollars. And for infants and toddlers services, there's always been an in-kind cost on the part of the school system because our speech pathologists, our occupational therapists provide those services, but that is the fiscal structure.
One more question. How would, I would say mostly our high school students, how would they find out about it? Because I didn't know that we had it. That's why I'm asking the question, so I can help spread the word about this.
Okay, so you said high school students. So just to clarify, this particular grant and this item, families who have children who at birth are identified as maybe being developmentally delayed, having significant cognitive or physical impairments would benefit from this service?
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Williams, did you have a question?
She answered one of my questions, which was about the students with, or children's with, who are identified to be having a disability. I just want to clarify, you said from birth to third grade?
Birth to age three.
Birth to age three. So this is a population that is not necessarily in our system as of that point in time. We do not start with students until they get to be like third or three or four, correct?
So I'll clarify. In the Individuals of Disabilities Education Act, that act has two parts to it. Part C of that law requires us to ensure that for children who from birth through age three, they can be identified as either being developmentally delayed, and you're right, they don't get an individualized education program until age three. But because of the requirements of the special education law, we are required to provide those students with services. And we use in the state of Maryland an individualized family services plan. And that's the plan that those families use until such time as they turn age three. And then at that time, families can decide to either continue with the individualized family service plan or they can accept an IEP. You're welcome.
Seeing no other questions, I will take a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point six under the budget consent agenda. Thank you. May I have a second? It has been moved and seconded to accept items six point one through six point eight under the budget consent agenda. Mrs. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
You have to vote, Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We have no items under non-consent agenda, so I'll move to eight point oh, governance, second readers, unfinished business. And I yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks.
Go for it.
But you said you were yielding the floor to me. I apologize.
I was going to keep on with my spiel, but you go.
Go ahead. Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items eight point one and eight point two require board approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2017 to 2022 and the fiscal year 2016 comprehensive maintenance plan.
Thank you. These are second reader items and so they're open for discussion. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I just had a quick question about the implementation of the new program, I guess last year to better track where we are on maintenance issues so that they're able to, once it's put in the system, that it's actually a follow-up process and then you get an alert. I think it was the way you described it, to make sure that it's done. How's that going?
Yeah, I know Monica had been, you know, reporting on that, but I believe we have an update. Carl?
Yes. The tracking mechanism that you're speaking of is our facility management system called SchoolDude, I think is, you know. We have implemented only one module of it. And we, we still have a long ways to go. We have average time to complete a work order over sixty days. We have a goal to get that down to forty-five days. We are in the process of bringing on staff to help us with that tracking. We anticipate that staff being onboard in about two months.
Thank you.
That's it. Ms. Williams?
I think at the last meeting, I mentioned, we appreciate you down in District Nine, what you've done. And so Ratsville High School with their band room, they love it. Gwynne Park High School and their football field, all that stuff, they love. So we appreciate all that you're doing down in District Nine, especially since our schools are very old and we need a lot of maintenance and repair on a regular basis. But this year, everyone is excited about all the things that they've gotten that are new. So thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Since Sonia opened the door, I do have a concern. It seems like work orders for simple projects are not being completed in timely fashion. And I know one school just requested paint, to paint the goalposts like six months ago. And so I would like some clarity on how that process should work. I know there must be a backlog because our system is so large, but it seems to me that if, you know, and I do want to applaud kind of all of Monica's division. There was a multi-issue in one of the schools. It was on the news. What they didn't report was that as soon as the school found out, the staff was there in a matter of minutes, you know, it hadn't even been an hour. But I do have some concerns about change order requests. And I talked to a building person and they're under the belief that schools in northern part of the county get their change orders, their requests through much, work orders, yeah, through much faster than the schools in the southern part of the county. This is coming directly from building folks. And so, you know, we can talk offline about it, but you know, I'm happy that things are going well in District Nine on that front. But I think there are still some concerns when it comes to the north and south and work order timeliness.
I, I could only mention the fact that we only have one facility service base or maintenance shop and it's located centrally here in Upper Marlboro. The transit time, however, to the south to some of our schools is, is greater than the transit time up to the north. But in terms of priorities, we do health, those work order requests that are based upon the health, safety, and welfare of our building occupants. We then prioritize them by our special schools, elementary schools, middle schools, and, and, and high schools. Our goal is to keep everyone healthy and, and safe. And we stand by those priorities. You mentioned a goalpost being painted. I know that is curb appeal, but we're concentrating on health, safety, and welfare first.
That makes sense. I just think six months to deliver a can of paint is not too much to ask, you know?
I agree and I will look into that.
Thanks.
Can I, I follow up. I see Ms. Epps and I want to, I'm going to follow up just because that's what Mr. Burrows talks about is significant, the concept that there is some kind of deliberate unfairness going on. And so I would just ask kind of explicitly, you talked about those priorities. I assume we track the data about how these maintenance orders go out and, and I need to know from you, is there any, do you have any evidence or any reason to believe that somehow, based on the location of your schools, that you're getting favorable or preferential treatment?
I have no evidence to, to support there's favorable treatment on maintenance or custodial issues between north and, and south.
Thanks. Ms. Epps?
Obviously, I'm concerned about my colleagues' remarks, but I also want to tie it back to an issue, another issue that you mentioned just earlier that you're hoping will be resolved in two months. So in terms of your staffing, is, is there an issue wherein at the present time, you don't have enough staff to meet the need of the requests, the maintenance requests that you have, which is part of your plan moving forward, you're looking to fulfill that need?
There are issues with our staffing. If you'll recall, we had in the FY16 operating budget, the forty FTEs for our second shift. I couldn't contain myself in anticipation of that. That will go a long way to address a lot of our, our issues. It will reduce the time that it takes to reduce time it takes to complete a work order. It's obvious, we can't do work in the schools while the building is occupied. I, I can further add that, yes, we, we do need additional staff in, in building services. There have been other studies that have been done since 2010 that, that support that.
Okay. And, and moving forward as we go into another process, budget process whereby we talk about priorities and getting information from our respective districts. And as we give that information to the CEO, after you receive the additional positions that you're anticipating, do you, do you foresee additional need to get the maintenance where it needs to be? Or is, is that?
Well, yes. There's also the issue of vehicles. To support the staffing that we have, we need close to a hundred.
And equipment too, right?
Yes. We need close to a hundred vehicles just for the staffing that we have. And if we add additional staff and we're going to need additional vehicles.
So it's actually not just the bodies in the schools, it's also the supporting, like you said, vehicles and the tools because anytime someone's going to make a repair, they also need tools as well. So it's, it's really a more comprehensive issue than just bodies on the ground, be it in the north part or the south of the, the northern part of the county or the southern part of the county.
And, and there's also the, the matter of training. As part of our capital improvement program, we've brought on quite a bit of new technology. And we're constantly trying to train our folks to, to keep up with it. And we do have programs in place to train folks, but it's sort of difficult when those folks are supposed to be out completing work orders and for them to go to training classes. But we're making progress with that.
Just from my own understanding, the position, those types of positions, I think traditionally have come through like different trades unions and, and those types of apprenticeship programs. Is that still how most of the maintenance workers are come by? Or is there a pool like in colleges and universities that are coming through, either via through engineering programs or electrical programs or the like?
We, we don't have an effective apprentice program. We did talk this past year with the college and career readiness folks about an apprentice program for several of, of our shops. But we hire publicly from the trade organizations that, that you, that you mentioned and those people who are, are willing to come to work from, from other companies.
There might be an opportunity. I know in some other counties, they run apprenticeship programs through the community college. And I know Prince George's is at the forefront of a lot of workforce development training. So perhaps there's a partnership, if, if it's not already in motion, that something can be done to enhance that. So. not already in motion, that something can be done to enhance that. So, I look forward to your, getting your staff.
I'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quinteros-Grady. You good? Dr. Anderson?
Good evening, Mr. Deltus, and thank you for the work that you do in maintaining our schools. I was struck, though, by your initial comment to Mr. Burrows's question. I think your initial comment was regarding the transportation time that it takes to get to South County. And I wondered about whether or not that time was a factor in maybe the, either the perception or the reality that you may not get to South County as often because perhaps you could get more done in schools that are in closer proximity to the central office in Upper Marlboro. Could you just expound a little bit on that transportation, the time that it takes to get to South County, and any impact that that might have on decisions that are made relative to work that is needed in South County?
I'd have to say that the time is but a, is not that big of a factor, but it does take more time because the schools in the South County are in rural locations. You'll have to get off of 301 and go onto Brandywine Road and other such smaller, smaller roads. Again, it is a factor.
Well, I do want to express that. I do live in South County. It's not rural at all. And there are many, many school, schools in our district in the, in Fort Washington, Oxon Hill, Temple Hills area.
What I can do is give you some data on work order completion time for southern schools and northern schools. As I said before, I'm not aware of any difference.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I see no one else for round one. I will start round two. Mr. Burrows?
I think your last point would be extremely helpful, because to Sagoon's, Dr. Eubanks's point, you know, I would love to take you on a tour of South County so that you could talk to the folks that I interact with on a very frequent basis. But to the safety, I know of a school that put in their work order for doorknobs, and they literally have classrooms in a school with no, with some of the, some of the classrooms having doorknobs. And if we went into lockdown, I think, I consider that a safety matter. And I think having that data would, would help either dispel that philosophy or that, you know, that theory, or confirm it. Either way, you know, I think we need to look at ensuring equity with our resources and the timeliness of our work orders. I think that's what Dr. Anderson was getting at, and that's what I'm getting at as another South County board member.
Ms. Epps?
I don't mean to belabor this issue, but I just want to clarify for my colleagues. So, I live in Laurel, and Laurel High School's up there, and then High Point High School's in Bellesville. So, it takes me forty-five minutes to an hour and fifteen to get here, forty-five on a really good day, like, with no one on the road. So, just in terms of, I think, you know, I take all your points into consideration, but I definitely think that it's a wider issue that outlines some of the conversation that we talked about. And I definitely agree with you that, you know, it's something that we need to get more data on so that we can address appropriately from not just physical positions, but also fleet and equipment and training. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I definitely agree with my colleagues on getting, getting the data to support the time, the type of repairs that are being requested, and the number, the number of repairs or work orders that we're getting, because I think this will definitely support and reiterate our conversation during the last budget session that we need to have a second shift to take care of some of these things, because it's hard to work on an air conditioning or heating unit when students are in class, or some, something electrical when the students are in class. So, I think having that data will definitely help us to, you know, push that conversation a little further. We did get some money in this budget to support additional staff, so hopefully that will help to mitigate some of those, to reduce the number of, I guess, long non-responses or a long response time. So, I definitely, when we look at the data, I would like to see what we did last year and compare it to what we're doing this year.
Ms. Grady?
Yeah, I just, I think I've, you know, heard the issue of equity come up, and I am on the north side. And so, I think one of the things I want to encourage my colleagues to do, I think we all should perhaps take the time to visit each other's or have an idea of the spread from central or south. Because if you were to speak about the north or the north getting, I guess, a quicker response, that's not the case if I speak to different people that are at those schools. It's, what I'm seeing in part of looking at the plan and trying to really wrap my head around a lot of the issues, I think Ms. Epps mentioned, just the wider issues. It's, we, you know, this may not be a good word to use, but I see a lot of it as a crisis, the fact that it's not just one school that's old. It's a lot of schools that are old. And, I mean, I've gone to the schools where, like, I praise the leadership, the principals, the teachers for just, they don't stop teaching, and they continue to do what they're doing for our children. And I'm grateful to them at the end of the day, but I know the challenges that, you know, in the north side, they're real regarding to that feasibility study, regarding to the overutilization, not having, you know, space to where to put the kids. That's safety. If you want to call safety, that's safety altogether. I mean, and we have just, the north side is just bursting at the seams. And I don't care what school you go to, you will see it. You will see them use every single space. It could be a, what used to be a teacher's lounge, they no longer have that. It would be turned into a classroom. So, we're talking about safety, and we're talking about, you know, priorities, you know, I just, equity, I just say, you know, I encourage you to visit the north side as well.
Thank you. And I'll put my second comment in, because I a hundred percent agree that we need to continue to look at and examine this data, and that we have significant challenges with maintenance. It's not a secret. It's why we so strongly supported the full second shift, one of the many things that we didn't get the ability to implement because our budget wasn't funded the way we felt it was needed. But I want that data. I want to make one thing clear, though. I would not want, I would not advocate that our staff spend one minute on trying to make an analysis of north versus south. I don't think we ought to, ourselves, perpetuate unfounded rumors that I don't think do any of us any favors. I think that we have, we all acknowledge that every single one of our schools has suffered in one way or another because we don't have the capacities that we've talked about, and we're working on trying to fix that every day. But I think getting that data, comparing it year to year, seeing that we're getting better, seeing how these new staff are working out, is going to be important to do.
I understand.
Ms. Jacobs?
Just real quick, I mean, I did, I started this conversation really asking about the programming, because I think one of the other pieces to this whole conversation, which doesn't deal with geography, it deals with your ability to do your job, period. And so, they, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that they need the appropriate funding to have the program in place. They're only doing one module. I'm not sure how far that takes you. But they need the program fully implemented so that if it's in Mr. Burrows' district, if it's in District Five, if it's anywhere across the county, those alerts will say, this was put in at this time, it hasn't been done yet, or it was put in at this time, it was completed, but it's now a second one or whatever for the same problem. And ultimately, our schools are all old. We just have two hundred-plus buildings minus maybe twenty, because we didn't have schools built for twelve consecutive years in this county. So, we have to, at one point in time, not this point in time, but that impacted the school district. And so, I really think the conversation is about, you know, to Mr. Burrows' point, though, I think he's hearing it because somebody is saying that this is what's happening to them. So, we have to take it all into account. Ultimately, is we have to get them the funding that they need to do their jobs. I can't tell you how many parking lots I've taken pictures of with holes and craters, and it's just, we just got to recommit to what the priorities are and make sure that we give your office what you need to do, your job. And the same thing applies to bus drivers. I mean, we have, every single year, we go through these cycles, and we just got to, we just got to commit to it from a budget perspective and put our money where it needs to be.
I would call your attention, this discussion was supposed to be about the comprehensive maintenance plan. And towards the rear of the comprehensive maintenance plan are those items that we, we've noted that, that we need to do. They total an enormous amount. I think it was like $218 million just for stuff that we want to do out of general operating funds. We all know that we're not going to be able to do all of those. So, it is a matter of funding.
Of course.
Just one last thing. I just want to reiterate again, we do appreciate what you've done in District Nine, and we waited a long time, from what I understand, for a lot of those things. And I know throughout the process, you'll get the complaints and, you know, the bad comments. But at the end of the day, when it's done, I want to make sure you understand that we appreciate what you do with what we give you to do it with.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further lights. And colleagues, what I'm going to ask, since our student board member can vote on item eight point two, but not eight point one, that we take these motions separately. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve item eight point one under governance second reader.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve items eight point one under second reader. I see no further discussion. Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Certainly, sir. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps? Ms. Eubanks? I'm sorry, she's not here. Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Okay, she just stepped in. Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps? Ten aye, sir?
Thank you. That motion carries. I will now ask my motion to accept item eight point two under governance second reader. Okay, we need to have a move. Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I see no further discussion. Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Ten aye, sir?
Thank you. That motion carries. We now, colleagues, move on to New Business nine point oh. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items nine point one through nine point two under New Business first readers.
Thank you. Dr. Eubanks, items nine point one and nine point two are first readers, which do not typically require comment. They're on the agenda as a result of a discussion in the Board Policies Review Committee. For the record, the administration does not agree with the proposed new Board Policy thirty-three twenty-five, and we will bring forward an alternative proposal.
Thank you. I would like to make a correction, if I could, to the first reader, just for clarity. It says it was moved by Regina Jacobs and seconded by Sagoon Eubanks. I believe it was seconded by Dr. Anderson. Is that correct? Can we please note that correction?
So moved.
It's been moved to approve items nine point one and nine point two as first readers. I have a move. Do I have a second as amended? Is there a question or issue?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. As always, no discussion is required, but I will invite it. I assume this is your notice for what you said never mind about. Okay. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Follow-up items from the August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, and the September tenth, two thousand fifteen board meetings will be posted in board docs upon receipt. And, colleagues, I will entertain a motion to approve and ratify actions taken in executive session on Thursday, September tenth, two thousand fifteen, and September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. It has been moved and seconded. Have a question? Yes, at the September tenth meeting, as folks may recall, we had to kind of go back to executive session after public session, so we haven't, so it's reiterated that while we will approve both of these, please do, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. That's okay. You're over there working hard. Please do, when we approve these, note, since we're approving for items in September tenth and twenty-fourth, that we don't include folks who are absent on the tenth.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it has been moved and seconded, I believe, to approve items taken in executive session on September tenth and twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, as follows: personnel appointments, student appeals, administrative matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adjourn five minutes before kickoff?
So moved.
Kickoff is eight, two minutes before kickoff. Hurry up, hurry up. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.